Welcome to the City Council Meeting here in Madera. Today is Wednesday, February 3rd, 2001. It is 6:00 PM. This meeting will be conducted pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order, which suspends certain requirements of the Ralph M. Brown Act. The City Council Meeting will be livestreamed on the city's website at Members of the public may participate in the meeting remotely through an electronic meeting via phone by dialing (669) 900-6833. Enter ID (933) 4673-6867, followed by * on your phone to speak. Comments will also be accepted via email at or by regular mail at 205 West Fourth Street, Madera, California, 93637. City Clerk, may you please have the roll call?
Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Diaz.
There.
Councilmember Gallegos.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Montes.
Here.
And Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Pastor Tim Echeverria, are you here?
Yes, I'm here. I just don't know what's going on with the picture though.
Okay. Would you all please rise for the invocation led tonight by Pastor Tim Echeverria?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
We're just gonna bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we just want to say thank you, God, today, Lord. And Father, we just pray, God, right now, God, in the name of Jesus, God, that you would help, Father God, our mayor, God, our council members, Lord God. We thank you, God, and we pray also for our police department, God. We lift up our city today, God, as we start this meeting, God. We just pray for your wisdom, God, your favor, God, your grace, and also your mercy, God. I pray, Father, tonight, Lord God, that you would give them strength. And Father, that you would just come into their houses today, God, and begin to help them and support them, Lord. We pray over our city today, Lord, and we pray, God, that you would give us wisdom. We give you all the glory, God, and all the honor. And in the name of Jesus, Lord God, we pray, amen.
Amen.
Would you please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance led tonight by Yvette Iratia?
Ready, begin. I pledge to the flag of the United States and to the Republic under God indivisible, liberty, and justice. Thank you.
Thank you, Yvette. We will now move on to the approval of the agenda. I will ask my colleagues if they have any changes to the agenda.
Mayor, a move that we adopt the agenda as presented?
Second.
Do we have any public comments on the agenda, Alicia?
No, Mayor, we do not.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Jose Rodriguez to approve the agenda, seconded by Councilmember Cici Gallegos. Please call the roll, Alicia, on the vote.
District 1.
Yes.
District 2.
Yes.
District 3. District 4.
Yes.
District 6. Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
Final vote, 6 yes, 0 no, motion passes.
Thank you very much for that. We will now move on to public comment. The first 15 minutes of the meeting are reserved for members of the public to address the council on items which are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers shall be limited to three minutes. Speakers will be asked but are not required to identify themselves and state the subject of their comments. If the subject is an item on the agenda, the mayor has the option of asking the speaker to hold the comment until that argument is called. Comments on items listed as a public hearing on the agenda should be held until the hearing is open. The council is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda. And no adverse conclusion should be drawn if the council does not respond to public comment at this time. Do we have anyone, Alicia, that is asking to make comments?
No, Mayor, I don't, I have not received any emails for public comment.
Thank you very much. We do not have any written communications. So we will move on to presentations. Department of Public Health update on COVID-19. Welcome, Sarah. You have the floor.
Thank you. So our current case rate in Madera County is 41.5 per 100,000 population. And our county positivity rate is 13.6. They are adjusting our case rate up. If you recall, in the tiers before, we had an adjustment based on whether or not we were testing above or below the state mean for testing. And currently, we're testing just below. So that causes our case rate to be adjusted up to 44.6. So it is really important that, due to vaccine shortage and our inability to really move through vaccination quickly, people continue to follow prevention measures that we know very well, distancing, masking, and that they continue to test frequently. So our recommendation, of course, is if anyone is exposed, if they have symptoms, that's always been true. But anyone who is out and about due to work or just other needs that they have would get tested about every four to six weeks is kind of a good pace. So just to give you an idea, our testing rate had been quite high at 515 per 100,000 population, and it's now at 390. That's not necessarily surprising, given that the case rates are coming down. So fewer people are experiencing symptoms and are concerned from exposure. So that's kind of a natural dip, but we want to keep that up. It helps us move through the tiers to be able to test at a high rate. So please encourage folks to continue to get tested. With vaccination, we are still prioritizing age 75 and up. We're monitoring that closely and recognize that there are residents who have not yet been able to vaccinate who are age 75 and up. This is the highest risk group for acute illness and hospitalization. We've recently looked at our death data in COVID, and we've identified some key factors. Age is certainly a factor in that scene across the board. But we're also seeing that with many ages, there is a higher number of deaths among farmworkers in particular. So we are advocating really strongly that we are able to prioritize farmworkers in allocation to the Central Valley, that as they are a major part of Tier 1 and means that we have a lot more people who are eligible in that Tier 1, that there would be more vaccine being allocated to the Central Valley and to Madera County. I wanted to address a frequent question about the possibility of a standby list. We have had kind of a temporary standby list that really we've tried to prioritize people based on the tiers. It's very difficult to do because at the end of a long day of providing vaccinations, it's difficult to reach people and have them arrive in a short period of time so that we can use up every dose of open vials. So what we have developed is there will be rolling out in the next couple of days an announcement about actual appointments that are standby appointments. We're probably going to call them overflow appointments. What we want to do is we want to avoid giving precious vaccine to those who are not in priority groups. Since we have people who are really susceptible to acute illness, we want to make sure that the eligibility is what we're going by more than anything else in the priorities. But we don't want to see things happen like we're seeing in photographs where, you know, people are camping out at Dodger Stadium and things like that. We'd like people to be able to know that they are registered for an overflow list, that there's a window of time they need to be available, and they have to be able to get to the vaccination site within 15 minutes. So they would register for one of those slots. Can't, they can't have allergic reactions, like a history of allergic reactions, because the wait time, the monitoring time, is longer. And so they register for one of those slots, and they'd get a phone call. And if for some reason their plans changed and they're not able to get there within 15 minutes safely, we're not wanting people to, you know, drive unsafely and things like that to get to the clinic fast, those individuals would be able to attend the next clinic as a walk-in. So it gives us that flexibility, and we're able to prioritize people appropriately. So far, in Madera County, we've received just over 25,000 vaccinations. By the end of this week, over 14,000 will be administered. When you factor in first and second doses, that's right on pace because we have started into second doses beginning late last week. And much of those are, of course, our healthcare workers who received their first doses first in line. A lot of questions are happening around the announcement of Governor Newsom today with regards to third-party administrator. I won't go into a lot of detail about that. Basically, the summary is, is they've identified Blue Shield, but there are no details about what Blue Shield will be responsible to do and how that's going to impact allocation and rollout of the vaccine. We don't have any details at this time. Any questions I might be able to answer?
Councilwoman Gallegos.
Good evening, Sarah. It's kind of the same question I had last time we spoke on. You're saying standby appointments are going to be, and a list is going to be projected out and given calls in 15 minutes to be there. And doesn't mean people are sitting by their phones and are going to be there. And there still could be a case of vaccinations just sitting. Is that list also including the City of Madera for our wastewater treatment and our water well technicians?
So it's not actually going to be a standby list. They're going to be registered, they're going to be appointments, just like every other appointment, except it's going to be a standby appointment. And the people who are eligible for those overflow appointments are going to be the same people who are eligible for the vaccination clinic itself.
Okay, and what if they don't show and we still have like 10 left?
Well, we're going to have plenty of those appointments so that we have enough people to be able to do that. And we're going to adjust as we learn. But the idea is that actually those people have an appointment at that time, and they're waiting for the phone call. So we're not nearly as likely to have people that aren't going to be available when they're called.
Okay, and so we come up with a list of like where we're at with our hospital staff, first responders, and to vaccinate, like, because I really stress that, you know, our wastewater treatment plant can't go down, our well system for our water can't go down. And those are the employees that are the most important, that we need to make sure that they're protected and they don't contract the COVID-19 virus.
So I think that probably we need to have a more in-depth conversation about this. It's, I think that many groups can say very similar things. And that's the problem that we're having, is if we said yes to every group that said, "We absolutely have to work no matter what", there are a lot of those people, and we just don't have enough vaccine to vaccinate everyone. So we have to put the prioritization in place and follow the guidance of the state. I imagine, I haven't asked the specific question as to where those people fall, but I think that they would not be in Tier 1. So I think that we'd have to make a specific case for that if it was going to be an exception.
Yeah, I'd like to make that case.
I'm happy to discuss that more.
We have 70,000.
It's not a single topic.
Yeah, we have 70,000 residents, and if they don't have water, it does affect everyone in the city. And if we don't have wastewater treatment plant running, and they can't, it affects every resident in the city. So other people are needing the vaccination, sure, and it's just important, but does it affect the whole city population? That's the difference that I'm trying to advocate for.
I hear you, and why don't we schedule a time and we can discuss it further? And then I can also gather more information about those individuals and their risk factors. That would be helpful.
Great, thank you, Sarah.
I would ask that we respect your position and follow protocols as you've been directed to be able to do everything that we can because there is a limited supply. And if there's any question about who within the city is going to be vaccinated or what kind of tiers, then Mr. Rodriguez, our city manager, continue to work with him to make sure that we're following protocols and give everybody the opportunity to get those. So thank you very much. Is there any other comments from Ms. Ross? Thank you very much. Thank you very much for sharing your information. Thank you, and good luck to all of your staff and make sure that we're all being safe. Thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good evening.
All righty. Next, we have item number two under Presentations. Proclamation recognizing the month of February as Black History Month. I will now turn it over to Councilwoman Anita Evans for this presentation.
Well, first and foremost, I'd like to say thank you to everyone and welcome this evening. I am very honored to present this proclamation as being the first African-American female to sit on the city council. There will be an event on February 21st at McNally Park. Social distancing is required, and we're inviting everyone to come out for the celebration. And at that time, we will be presenting this proclamation as well as a proclamation to the eldest African-American female here, period. Her name is Lucille Murphy. She was born December of 1919. She is 101 years old. So we're inviting everyone to come out for the celebration. And at this time, I will read the proclamation, and it goes as this says. "Of the mayor, City of Madera, State of California, February, proclamation, Black History Month. Whereas African-American history is a very large part of African-American history and should be studied throughout the year. And since 1976, February has been designated as a month in which especially memorable events should be recognized and celebrated. And whereas Black History Month is an occasion to rediscover the enduring studies of African-Americans and the gifts of freedom, purpose, opportunity, and they have bestowed on the future generations. And whereas a result of the determination, hard work, and perseverance, African-Americans have made valuable and lasting contributions to our community and our state, achieving exceptional success in all aspects of society, including businesses, education, politics, science, and the arts. And whereas all residents of Madera are encouraged to reflect on past successors and challenges as of African-Americans and look to the future to improve society so that we live up to the ideals of freedom, equality, and justice. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Santos Garcia, Mayor of the City of Madera, and on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim February as Black History Month, signed on this third day of February 2021." Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Evans. Thank you very much for that. We will now move on to item number three. Olive Safe House, A New Home for Victims of Human Trafficking, a report by Mr. Daniel Foss.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. So I'll try to make this quick. I have a quick little slideshow for everybody. Let me share my screen here. Okay, we good to go?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So what we're going to be talking about today is the Olive House. Most of you have probably heard of Olive and my involvement in it. But it stands for Overcoming Limitations Through Interventions, Values, and Empowerment. Olive is an organization I founded about five years ago, and it focuses on human trafficking. And specifically, our main focus is on street-level prostitution. And we try to provide assistance for the girls that are stuck in this life to be able to get out of that. So where it started initially, actually, today I'm going to focus on our safe house, which is opening here in the next few days. But I want to just touch on a few things of how we did start because you all know him very well. When I started this about five years ago, I had an idea in my head of what I wanted to do, and I knew we needed this service. And there is nothing like this around here. And I was contacting girls on the street, and I had no avenue for them to get out of that life, even if they wanted to. So I remember I went to my commander at the time, and he was this grumpy fellow that was always a little bit aggressive, little guy. And I said, "Hey, this is my idea. I'd like to run with this. I'd like to get some training on it." And he gave me the blessing. And you all know him now, he's no longer commander, but it's Chief Lawson. So I do have to give him credit for supporting it from the very beginning. And it was something that, the reason I bring it up is it was something that is very rare in an organization, to be given the opportunity to have a very kind of crazy idea and say, "Yeah, run with it, we support you." Because I came with an idea of, hey, I want to start something. I don't know what it is, I don't even know what it's called, but I know we need it, and I'd like support from the organization. And I've had the support from the organization and the city from the very beginning. So I want to show you some before and afters of our Olive House. And then there's a quick little video that I incorporated as well. So pardon the mess on all these, a lot of these, this has just been a whirlwind experience. So when we first got the building, I went through and took some photos. To be honest with you, I'm not even exactly sure who this little one is. So I think it's our designer's kid. But here's some pictures of the building before. As you can see, the floor, it's a medical facility. So the floor looks like a medical facility. It was in very good condition, but all the cabinetry and everything else. Building was built in the 60s, and it had that feel very much. You have the, I think it's called the neon lighting or fluorescent lighting throughout. And parts of the building were just dated. You had this electrical strips all along here. I was going to open it as that. Most people, if you've ever been to a shelter of any type and seen them, they're not nice inside. They're very much just a roof over your head and somewhere for you to sleep, and that is it. And I was going to open it as it was because it takes money to do anything. Well, I had a lot of support from the community, a whole lot of support from the community, a whole lot of support from everybody. And I was able to raise the funds to do a remodel of the building, which we're going to show here in a moment. If I can change slides. All right. So again, this was a medical facility. So this is showing one of the rooms. The rooms had this pass-through, that's not a mirror, that's actually double doors because it had a x-ray machine in here, and you could use the x-ray machine on either side. The cabinetry was very shallow, used for medical tools. So it wouldn't really work for a person. Sorry. And then the floors, again, were somewhat dated, as you could see. This was the reception area. So this is in front of here, this little window here would be where everybody would come in, you know, into the main lobby. This is reception area, obviously no use for us. It was very important for me to make this feel like a home. So how do you make something like this feel like a home? Again, here was what we had for a kitchenette. It was the best we had. Just some simple cabinetry, very old sink. There was like something here to clean medical supplies. And here was the hallways where I envisioned being the bedrooms for the clients when they came to the facility. So I'm going to try to hit play on this, and hopefully this works out. And it's about a six-minute video, so if you bear with me, we'll do a little tour of the building. This was taken today. First of all, please don't mind the mess. I probably should have waited a couple of sessions, but I was very excited to be able to show everybody. So there's still a mess in there, we haven't got fully moved in. Hello, everybody. I'm Dan Foss with the City of Madera, and I'm the chairman of the Olive Organization. Also lieutenant with the Madera Police Department, and currently I am the director of Public Works here for the City of Madera. And today, I'd like to give you a little tour of the Olive House. So if you come on in before we start, I do have to mention, I probably should have waited a couple of weeks, but I was really excited to show it off. There is a lot of mess. We're in the process currently of moving in. Construction is done, but we're in the process of furnishing it. In another two weeks, maybe four weeks, we'll be fully done. But I got a little overexcited, and I really wanted to show it off. So as you step into the building, you'll notice this building was built in the 60s, and it was a medical facility. We tried really, really hard to make this feel like a home, if it is going to be a shelter for moving victims. And if you notice on the floor, we changed all the flooring out, the floors, we put crown molding to all the doorways, we changed all the lightings. Sorry, sorry, I have to get your comments. Let me see if I can turn this up real quick. Okay, let me try again. Did I escape the slideshow, everybody? I'm sorry. Cici, I only see you, so if you could speak up and help me out, then maybe we could see back where I'm at.
Yes, we're not seeing any of your slideshow now. Oh, we got it on, the cover. Now we have, we're there.
Hello, everybody. Is that better?
Perfect.
I apologize, guys. Madera Police Department, and currently I'm going to let it play before I mess it up more. Public Works here for the City of Madera. And today, I'd like to give you a little tour of the Olive House. So if you come on in before we start, I do have to mention, I probably should have waited a couple of weeks, but I was really excited to show it off. There is a lot of mess. We're in the process currently of moving in. Construction is done, but we're in the process of furnishing it. In another two weeks, maybe four weeks, we'll be fully done. But I got a little a little overexcited. I really wanted to show it off. So as you step into the building, you'll notice this building was built in the sixties, uh, and it was a medical facility. We tried really, really hard to make this feel like a home, because it is gonna be a shelter for human trafficking victims. And if you notice on the floor, we changed all the flooring out, changed out the baseboards. We put crown molding through all the doorways. We changed out all the lighting to cam lighting. Uh, we also ran a sprinkler system through the house for fire suppression. One big thing, if you can catch on camera here, we changed out all the doors uh, throughout the home. It had the very industrial-style medical doors. I think it kinda adds a lot to making it feel more like a home. Um, and let's just start with the tour. So the first room you come in, again, pardon the mess. We're moving in, so this will be all moved out shortly. This is gonna be our gym. Uh, it's a very small room, but uh, we're not gonna have free weights or anything like that. Our gym will um, consist of a stationary bike and some yoga mats. We partnered with a local gym here that actually does the stationary bike training, and they could do it remotely from this room. We'll go into the next room, which is going to be our one of two bathrooms. We have two bathrooms, a full and a half. Uh, so this is our full bathroom. We didn't have to install the shower into the bathroom, obviously, because it was a medical facility. They didn't have a bathroom at the time. Uh, but I think it came out great. We ran the half tile all the way up, full tile in the shower, changed out the flooring, and it came out amazing, you think. This here is all custom cabinetry that our contractor did for us. Uh, and he did a great job. It's all been modified, so it has the anti-slam hinges with the slow-close hinges. Uh, we left all this cabinetry in, just refaced it all. And I think it came out excellent. This used to have a sink over here. Industrialized. We're trying to keep it as much homey as we could, but we do need the space for as we get clients coming in. The next room we're gonna go into is our office for the staff. This wall here, it's a kind of a funny-shaped room, because this wall here, we had to push out uh, for the shower next door. And this will come in here will be lockers for as we get clients in. They have what's called a blackout stage, where they're not allowed to have cell phones, computers, anything like that for at least thirty days. And that material is all kept in here, in the lockers. This room, not too interesting here, but I did wanna show, we have a full laundry room. This will consist, you can see we ran new plumbing for our washer and dryer, and we'll have a bed bug machine in here as well. Make sure we don't have a spread of bed bugs. Other than that, just a rather large laundry room. And going back out, the hallway you currently see, come back this way. I have amateur cameraman. I apologize. Now, the hallway here is going to be where we have our five rooms. If you stay there, uh, if you can, I'll show you each room. So we have room one, two, three here. I know it's kinda hard to see on the camera, four and five. So I don't know if we'll go into each one. I'll explain the process of what these are for. Each one of these rooms is for our clients. So it'll be one client per room, which I'm actually proud of and insist upon. Many shelters this size, they'll put four uh, clients per room, which will have no furniture. It'll just be two bunk beds with four clients, no personal space whatsoever, because you're just trying to get people up the street. Our approach is a little different. I am doing the um, quality over quantity. So I try to keep it small so that we could really focus on everybody that comes through. Each room is identical, and we'll go into one of these in just a moment. And the way it works is each room was sponsored by a different community organization for the furnishings of the room. So we partnered with Rotary, Lions, and Seroptimist to furnish the, the rooms here, and they actually furnished much of the building. Uh, and then on the, and that's the furnishings for the room. The clients will actually come from the police or law enforcement organizations that we partner with in the community. So for example, the client for this room, this room belongs to Madera PD and Chachilla PD. So the only client that will actually be going into this room will be a client that is located and contacted by Madera PD or Chachilla PD. This room here is the counting room. So this is Madera Sheriff's Department, probation, and the jail. This room is actually Olive's room in Caton C. And the fourth room is the DA's office and the defects um, for that room. This fifth room, I'll talk about in just a moment. Once we go into it, it's a little bit different. So if we just step into one of these rooms here, as you can see, the space is quite big, I, I feel, for a um, safe house. It has very nice windows. Um, to give it some lighting, uh, it's a big room. I'm a big guy. I couldn't give you just fine. Each room comes with a vanity. Uh, each room comes with a fan. And the vanity is excellent, because when they are sharing the two bathrooms, it does give them a little more personal space to get some of their hygiene done in the bedroom. And if we go into the fifth room, I'll explain the idea of this one. Those four rooms, we just want five, because they're long-term rooms. So usually for rehabilitation, it's at least six months, up to eighteen months, the client's gonna be in one of those rooms. This room here is a much more temporary room. This is if we have a client that just needs a place to stay for a couple of days or in a transitionary period, we can use this room. So this is a short-term room. We can also use this room for staff if they need to stay the night for, for something. They can use this room to sleep in. So we're gonna transition from here to the common address. Again, do not mind the mess, everybody. I do apologize. Um, I was just very excited to show it off. So as you walk in this way, you'll see we have the little dinette, kitchenette, kitchen area. I don't know which one of those is accurate, but it's all of those. So this is the eating area here. Uh, um, again, we are all pretty much messy right now. I apologize for that, but you can get the idea here. Here's a living room. And it's a big room, again. Um, this would been before where you would have had the customers come in when it was a medical facility and wait. We turned it into living room. It has our septic bath here, which is a half-bath. And it's been fully redone as well. This, you could get him a cameo shot. It's Fred. He came with the property, and uh, we can't get rid of him. So now he lives here. And if you walk this way, this here is actually our sixth room. Um, but I don't want a sixth room for our size for Olive. I, that's too many clients for us to be able to manage. This is a big room, and also, again, I'm going for the home bill. I don't want people packed in here. I'm trying to make this as much home as possible. So this will actually be our library. It's gonna be our library slash computer room. Um, and let me just flip the light real quick. Library slash computer room, also counseling. Uh, all the girls do is meditate for counseling. Uh, so they can have counseling here on-site at AB. Or uh, many of our clients do have children, and they're under supervised visitation, so they can actually describe where they can have child visits here as well. It's a big room, and uh, will be our library. And then I think if you come from over there, going this way, you can see our kitchenette. So our kitchenette, I'm very proud of how this came out. I think it came out excellent. Uh, this, again, when it was a medical facility, this was all kind of a jumble of weird things. We had it fully redone to make it a small kitchen. So we'll have a, a conve- conve- convection oven here with a microwave. Uh, drake cooler. We do have a large standalone freezer, too, that goes in the laundry room. Dishwasher, and then a decent counter space. We did not put a um, stove top because um, just not a good idea in a shelter. We will have a hot plate and uh, other cooking utensils that we locked up that they can be used when staff is here. So with that, uh, that's the end of the tour. I just kinda wanna emphasize one more time, this, I want everybody to understand, this is not Olive's building. I very much want this to be the county and city building for human trafficking. I believe firmly that we're here to help accomplish a task for the community, not vice versa. So although Olive kinda runs it, that's really all we're doing. This is the community building for human trafficking. I think it's come a long way. I think everybody um, that has helped me along the way. We're still a fairly young organization. We've come a long way. And this is something that I think Madera should be very proud of. So again, thank you for doing the tour with me, and uh, I'll show you some other before-and-after pictures now. Thank you. Okay. I'm not muted, right? Okay. Hopefully that camera, shaky camera, didn't make anybody sick. And also, I think it's an IT problem, but it made me look bigger than I actually am in person. So disregard that part as well. I don't know what was going on there. But I'll do some side-by-side um, camera pictures here, just showing where we're at with the building. So here, of course, is the before. These are, these are looking down the same angle um, from the main entryway. As the video showed that you just saw, I think the transformation is amazing. You can see the floors, how much better they look, the uh, we refaced these and just repainted them. This was the sink that we took out, put new cabinetry in. Here's one of the bedrooms. Adding the doors, which I have to give my contractor, we used the Earth Builders. They were excellent for us. Uh, the doors were not in the budget, and I said, hey, it's something I can't afford. And he ended up donating doors for us throughout the building. And these are the cabinetry that we all pulled out and made the rooms, um, put in new walls. Here's one of the bathrooms. Not too impressive there. Here's just showing some of the lighting. And here's the little kitchenette again. And then here's the final um, bathroom. And then here's some of our sponsors. I, I did wanna in, in particular, mention United Valley Insurance Services, just because I did mention most of the groups that were sponsoring the rooms, which was uh, Lions, Rotary, and Seroptimist Society. But United Valley Insurance Services has donated a whole lot, and they're gonna be furnishing the entire library for us. So with that, if there's any questions or anything, I did not cover what Olive does. I just wanted to kinda cover the safe house for today. Um, but it's something that I think everybody here should be really proud of. This is something that the community has put together. When I started this, I fully intended this to just be a one- or two-person operation and helping one or two people at a time. If a year, if that. We're full constantly, and we're growing because the community is so supportive. It's everything here, we're not getting this through grants. Everything here has been through some community support, which is quite amazing for something like this. And we're also, as far as I know, we're the only one that exists that is a human trafficking um, safe house that's so closely connected to law enforcement, which helps us greatly, because law enforcement is the ones that's contacting many of these girls on the street. So with that, I'm no longer sharing, right? We're good? Uh, is there any questions or anything I can help anybody with?
Um, Daniel, um, I wanna thank you for that presentation. This is a wonderful job. Um, you and all your partners, all the organizations that have gotten together to do this. Uh, this is amazing. Um, I would ask you to, uh, um, if we could have a link provided to the city so that people can make donations, um, I think that would be beneficial if you, we could help you publicize um, the fact that we be, will take donations and able to expand or modify anything in the future.
Yeah, I appreciate that very much. So I could provide the link through the chat, but it's olivemadera.com is our website. We do have a website where it has a link for donations there. And the, the line now we say is the Beatles are not true. When they said, "All you need is love", that's not true. You need money. You need a lot of money if you wanna do anything. Uh, so love does not keep the lights on. So um, if anybody's interested in, in donating, we do need that always. Also, we're always open to volunteers. Uh, we're looking for volunteers to assist us constantly with clients that we do have coming in. And finally, I would like to just, if anybody's a long-term Maderian, you probably might recognize where that building's at. Just don't say it out loud, because it is a safe house, so we don't want it uh, disclosed if anybody recognizes it.
I believe we have a, a question from councilmember Gallegos.
Uh, it's a comment. Lieutenant Foss, I would just like to thank you. Um, I've been on council five years, and my first couple weeks, I did a ride-along, and the chief um, partnered me up with Sergeant Foss at the time. And that was my first experience on a ride-along and doing something with the city, and we actually ran into um, a young lady by the name of Anastasia. And um, the care and time that he gave her was amazing to see firsthand. And it is, this is his project with the support of um, the chief and the rest of his officers. But what an asset he is to our residents to have this opportunity for um, this whole organization. Every service club that has been involved has seen his passion and the love and care that goes into it. And um, I am truly thankful and blessed that you have decided to give, and so a lot of your extra time. It's not just work time. To do this is all in your time, that you've done this for years. And um, and it's all started off with your, if I remember right, right, your wife is making little bags of toothbrush and deodorant, and they would hand the bags to the girls. And I know Lieutenant Foss has several wonderful success stories of young ladies who are now living lives just like you and I. And uh, and I feel that if you've changed one life, you've made a difference. And I know you have done more than one. And so I just wanna thank you from the bottom of my heart and from this community that you've invested in your, in your life and your time for us, and I truly appreciate it. And I have seen a difference in five years. And I just wanted to thank you um, from my district, from my city, who I'm born and raised in love. Um, that we are blessed to have you do this for us and, and create this program. So I wanted to um, let you know that, Lieutenant Foss. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Cece. And thank you for not mentioning the name of the ride-along. Somebody actually got away with it. He was fast.
As you see, I'm not, I'm not seeing any public comment. Do we have any public comment on your side?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for that, Mr. Foss. Um, we will now move on to a workshop um, under A1.
Councilwoman Evans, Mayor has a question.
Councilwoman uh, Evans, yes?
It's not a question. I just want to compliment you. Thank you. I have been to a safe house before, and I do understand, and it is a remarkable thing that you're doing. If you need a volunteer, I am so willing to come and to help. If you need extra clothing or whatever, just, you know, I sent you my number, so please let me know, but thank you so very much. It is, it's a much-needed thing here in Madera. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Again, moving on. Um, item A1, Workshop On Proposal To Update City Of Madera Animal Control Regulations. I believe this is presented by Mr. Rodriguez. Arnaldo?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, member of the council. Uh, the item before you this evening, it's a workshop. Um, no action is being requested of council this evening. However, direction from council would be greatly appreciated, and this is specific to animal control regulations. And with that, I'm gonna be sharing my screen. Just bear with me for a few seconds here. I believe council can see my screen now?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much. So a little bit of background on this item, um, a couple of the veteran council members may recall um, that right before COVID, Councilwoman Gallegos had indicated a desire to or city staff to, to take a look at the existing city's regulations pertaining to animal control. Um, um, since then, unfortunately, we've had the COVID um, nineteen pandemic. We've had a couple of other issues um, that, not to dismiss it or say they were more important. Um, however, they simply uh, really occupied our time. So with that being said, we have found a small break in time, and we thought it would be appropriate before we expend too much or too many city resources continuing with this. Um, that we simply bring it to council, provide a thirty-thousand-foot level overview. And if council had any gut reactions or any specific direction, um, our request is that, you know, if we can hear it tonight or in the, or in the near future, before we start going down a path, and then council says, hey, that's not really the path we were hoping, or that's not the path that we were looking to go. So with that, the city currently does have animal control regulations. Uh, the existing ordinance was approved at various times in the city's history. In going through the code, um, there are some dates going back to nineteen sixty-one, and there were some as recent as nineteen ninety-eight. There were some that were even more recent um, than that. But just like anything, especially when it comes to rules and regulations of a local agency, uh, sometimes it's gonna hit the pause button, take a holistic uh, view on the existing ordinance. And really, the question becomes, does the existing ordinance provide the set of regulations and control measures that we believe are needed in a much larger city today than what existed back in nineteen ninety-eight? Having grown up in Madera, I know nineteen ninety-five, the population was twenty-seven thousand people. The reason I always remember the numbers, I used to pass by it every day um, on Avenue thirteen and one forty-five. Um, and so with that, uh, in terms of the existing regulations, um, a couple of things that they do cover, there is language that, that requires that, that dog specifically uh, be licensed. It does require that um, that dogs be vaccinated in order to acquire a dog license. Um, there are some regulations, again, specific to dogs. There is a mandatory leash requirement in the city. Um, there is language uh, about abating, um, about abatement for, for either uh, vicious dogs or um, for, for um, for dogs that are not being maintained properly, if the kennel sizes are not appropriate. And on top of that, it stipulates some violations and then the appeal process for that. So again, the city does provide some regulations. So again, the city does provide some regulations. However, again, um, just like all city regulations from time to time, it's always good to hit the pause button, revisit them to make sure that, that, um, that the regulations reflect contemporary regulations in comparison to other cities. And maybe there's some things that are missing in our code that, that, uh, that have come to the forefront in the past 20 years. Um, so again, so, so the purpose of today's meeting is to discuss some very basic components uh, of the current ordinance, which I just provided and put, and some potential recommendations. Um, the overall purpose of, of an update from staff's perspective at this point is to ensure that, um, that we're encouraging responsible pet ownership. That's the goal. So the, so the goal is not to restrict who can own a pet, the type of pet. But again, it comes down to responsible pet ownership to make sure that our community members are knowledgeable and that they're maintaining their pets well. Again, um, the, the goal is not to be big brothers. It's not to be, uh, to, uh, to, to be dictators about who can own a pet. But rather it's just making sure that it's responsible because if people are not responsible, oftentimes the illness or the responsibility falls on the city and nonprofit organizations, for example, um, with this, uh, evening, we have two animal advocates. Uh, DJ Becker and then we also have Olvet Road, um, who have a long history here in Madera when it comes to, to, uh, to, to animals. Uh, and I'm going to say animals. I think it, it goes across all animals, uh, dogs, uh, horses and cats. I'm sure there's other animals in there. Um, so one thing that our current code does not mandate is the city does not have specific language requiring that, that pet owners spay neuter their pets. Um, in other communities they do. Uh, for example, uh, city, uh, the city of Clovis does. Um, a couple of the benefits that, that, that could occur is that it could potentially control, uh, the number of pet, um, of stray animals that we have in our community. Um, I think collectively we would acknowledge that, that, that we do have um, probably a greater proportion of stray animals in comparison to like size cities. Um, and, and again, I don't believe that, that this ordinance is going to solve everything. However, again, it's a step in the right direction and that's kind of what we're looking for. Some of the actions, um, some of the benefits may not be seen for numerous years. Um, because again, sometimes there's a large, um, there's a larger education component that's going to come to this. And at the same time, there's going to be a lot of organizations, some non, uh, some nonprofit organizations that the city is going to have to partner with to make sure that we're, um, and that we, uh, uh, kind of we strategize and then we attack this issue. Um, there's also medical and behavioral benefits to the pets that they're spaying neuters. But then at the same time, I'll, um, um, I would be foolish to think that it's not going to come at a cost. And it will be a cost issue for, for some pet owners. There are many pet owners that costs may not be an issue have wherever. Um, I think collectively we also understand that there are some community members that are not going to have the means um, to spay neuter because pet ownership, it's, it's not cheap. It's costly. Um, and on top of that, anytime you add additional layers of government regulation, unfortunately, that comes at a cost to someone. Um, pet limiting ordinances. In the city of Madera, we, um, we currently do not limit the number of pets. There's some space requirements, but if you have a relatively large property, you, you could have a good number of pets. Um, that's, that's not the norm currently. The norm for most cities, um, I, I actually, I probably shouldn't say norm for most, um, for most of the codes that I, I personally reviewed. Most cities place a limitation on certain sized animals hypothetically. They'll say, um, you can have up to four adult dogs. Um, unless you're a breeder. And there's always exceptions to breeders and some other types of businesses. For example, pure dog kennel obviously wouldn't apply for that or to that. Uh, however, um, if you're a single family home, which was roughly, uh, about 55% of our community is, maybe 60% of our community is. At that point, it would stipulate, um, you could have X number of dogs. You can have X number of cats. Or there's a combination thereof. So you could have five dogs, four cats. We can't have more than seven hypothetically. And then at that point, the owners, um, the pet owners get to decide the number of dogs and cats. And again, the goal is not to be big brotherish. However, one of the challenges that city staff currently have, if we go out to a house um, and they do have, um, a rather large number of, of pets and they're not properly taking care of those pets, then, then the challenge is that the city does not have any rules or regulations that, that, that mandates that, that, that they get rid of some of those pets. And on top of that, if you have irresponsible, um, pet owners, oftentimes those are the pets that unfortunately will escape. They'll crawl under these fences, they'll jump fences, they'll lead through an unlocked gate. And then they become stray and then, um, that obviously creates a lot of problems. Um, unfortunately, the majority, like a lot of communities, we, we have had some incidences where, um, where animals have, have attacked individuals. Um, they create traffic hazards and a whole lot of other hazards. Um, so again, so there's some health issues, there's general welfare of citizens, and then there's, um, um, just like any code, how I said, there would be exceptions to, to breeders or for breeders, I, I should say. Um, animal care standards, our current code does not have specific language pertaining to animal care standards. Um, some of the benefits to that are obviously is, again, the goal is to promote responsible pet ownership. That's, that's really the goal to promote, uh, to promote humane care and treatment of animals. And then, uh, to prevent animal, um, abuse. And I put prevent italicized because I'm not confident that we can necessarily prevent it. We can try to minimize it. And really the goal is to minimize, um, animal abuse. So the process, very similar to the cannabis process, I, I expect that this is going to be, um, an iterative process where, where it's not going to be, um, people are only going to have one opportunity to provide feedback where the, the, the goal is that there's continuous feedback by both the council, the community members and people that have expressed an interest in this issue. Um, so really the goal is to receive council direction. We will go back, we'll talk with city staff. And when I say city staff, the goal is to include the various agencies or departments that touch this. Um, we'll be meeting with the county next week. Chief Lawson and I will be to talk about it. Uh, we want community feedback. So the goal is that we would have a workshop where, where we would invite feedback. Um, and, and again, we would definitely want to partner with the county and the animal shelter to make sure that any rules that were, um, that we don't, um, that we put in place do not have unintended consequences. The challenge whenever you write a code is that oftentimes you do have unintended consequences. So I would expect that any code we have, we have to treat it like a living document. And at some point we would have to come back before council and acknowledge that there's unintended consequences and say, it's probably, here's a good time for us to make some modifications because it didn't, um, result in the desired action. So again, so the goal tonight is just to provide, um, established discussion by council and to get direction from council, um, really on any items, but probably the three big ones that currently do not exist would be the spay and neuter standards, uh, animal limits in terms of pet limiting ordinance and animal care standards. Some of the other items that are currently in our code, we would revisit those same items and we would incorporate them into, um, into an updated code. However, the goal would be to to update some of the language to make sure that, that whatever, um, we prepare is, um, has the latest, um, legal terminology and it reflects contemporary standards, both, uh, both in pet care and, and in terms of enforcement. As an alternative, the council this evening could say, hey, uh, hey staff, you know what? Let's hit the pause button. Or council could say, you know what? This is great, but we really want you to go meet with X person or we want you to go explore another avenue or options. So with that being said, that actually concludes my presentation. And if, um, if it's okay, I will stop sharing my screen. And I will, um, I'll turn it back over to council. But again, and the goal is to simply provide a 30,000 foot level. We have not expended a tremendous amount of resources, um, beginning the update process, but before we did, I simply wanted, um, I would simply want the council's acknowledgement that this is, uh, that we're down the right path. I, uh, we also have two new council members, um, and some, some of this is going to be new to them. Um, just in case they start to receive community questions, kind of they could, uh, uh, try to provide some accurate information. So with that, Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you and council for any feedback that you may offer. And again, we do have two guests with us tonight that may want to offer their insight as well. Thank you. Mayor, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. Um, uh, Mark, um, there are some people that are having trouble raising their hand to be acknowledged. So if you could put something in the chat box, um, having them, uh, giving them instructions how to make sure that they can access. And if someone can still not do that, then, um, I would ask you to contact Mark directly. Um, so I would like to turn this over. Thank you very much, Arnaldo, for that. Um, you mentioned two people who would like to have comment on this and I'll, I'll let them, um, I'll let them do that. But first I would like to ask if any of my council members want to, uh, ask any questions. Uh, Councilwoman Gallegos.
Uh, it's just a comment. I'd like to thank all of the staff for looking into this and that even Chief Lawson has talked to other chiefs in other cities about what they're doing. So a lot of time and effort has got put into, um, the presentation tonight and has looked towards the future of what we're going to need to do. Our city is only growing bigger. We have more animals that are coming and, um, in order to allow our, um, law enforcement to help us as citizens, this is really important that we need to put in place. So that's my comment. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, uh, Councilwoman Gallegos. Um, Arnaldo, who do you have, um, that wishes to speak on this issue?
Well, both, both Olvet Rhodes, uh, she's the president of the, for Madera Animal Shelter. He's here and we also have DJ Becker. I'm not confident that both of them want to speak, but I, um, historically since my time at the city, they've both been very passionate about animals and our existing regulations. And I think it would be appropriate to ask them if they'd like to say anything without knowing if they would.
Okay, okay, that, that's, that's fine. First I will recognize council member Rodriguez.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Garcia. I, I did have a question. Um, I know that, um, um, this would also require police enforcement. And I like to hear from our chief how, how that would come into play, how, how that, uh, what kind of a plan we would have in play to do. So would we designate specific officers for that particular, uh, um, uh, that particular job? If, if that was the case, that the city decided to, to pursue a more, uh, uh, assertive, um, uh, code enforcement or not code enforcement, but rather ordinance with, uh, animal control?
Before we move, um, Hilda, did you have something to say? I, I thought I saw your hand raise, no? Hilda?
Oh, I, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you. I, I just pressed it accidentally. But while I have the floor, I, I will just, uh, add something to what, uh, while your current ordinance does not have, uh, a requirement for spaying and neutering like other ordinances do, there is a provision in there that when people come and get their business, like their license for dogs, that they will be charged a lower fee if they are spayed or neutered. So that's something to, to take note of.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Hilda. Excuse me. Uh, Chief, did you want to respond to Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes, thank you. Um, so actually with the new ordinance, nothing procedurally will change at the police department, animal control. And, uh, we'll handle the calls. This actually gives us a, a, a little more structure. Um, some ordinance that we can enforce and basically, you know, put some teeth um, into our animal ordinance that we don't have currently. Um, but as far as the, the, the day-to-day operations, um, nothing here will change. Um, procedure wise, um, so if animal control is not on, then officers respond. And they can, with the new orders, they can take appropriate action and then that's forwarded to animal control. Um, and again, this is, this is more, uh, to give us the tools to affect change in our community. One thing I would like to add that, that a lot of people don't understand is that this is very costly. Uh, animal control is very costly. And what I mean by that is, when, when animals, there isn't a spay or neuter and there isn't responsible animal care, the animals run loose throughout the city. The animals get struck by vehicles. Um, officers are called to those calls at all hours. And we have to, um, take custody of those animals and then rush them to care. We have to take them to a veterinary service and have, um, whatever procedure is necessary to sustain life uh, on that animal. And that is very costly. What, you know, we'll go to a 24-hour vet in Fresno to administer the care on the animal. Uh, before we can then take it, um, when they allow us in there to, um, the animal shelter. So those are hidden costs. And, and with this, we can kind of curtail some of that if we have responsible pet ownership and we don't get in the arena of that added cost on the city of, of treating injured animals.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, Mr. Mayor, if, if I, if I may, I just wanted, thank you, Chief, for the, uh, uh, for your, um, for your comments on that. You know, I, I think that's an excellent idea, um, when it comes to, uh, responsible pet owners. Um, one thing I will ask that if the council does decide to go this, this path is to, um, look into, um, the adverse impacts that it has on specific, uh, sectors of our community when it comes to enforcing or policing any type of ordinance. I know that, uh, at times, you know, uh, it might be the minority groups that typically absorb the most of the cost and the expense when it comes to enforcing an ordinance of this nature. So, um, I, I do think it's something that's responsible that we, we certainly need to, uh, start looking at. Uh, but certainly start looking more into, uh, utilizing, um, some sort of fund for outreach and try to educate people as to why it's important to have a, uh, a spay and neuter, why it's important and, and, uh, in, in a way, so it's not so punitive, so to speak, to certain sectors of our community. Uh, but I certainly agree, uh, with you, Chief, that it certainly reduces costs. Hopefully that offsets, uh, the, the, the other costs that will come in trying to enforce this. Uh, but you know, those are my comments in regards to this. I, I know that there's, I'm, I'm sure that there's other folks who that want to speak and I think DJ might have a presentation. So I'll, I'll move with that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez. Uh, well now we'd like to recognize DJ Becker.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for scheduling this workshop tonight on updating the City of Madera's animal ordinances. I have been appearing here and hounding this council on this health and public safety animal issue for at least the last 10 or 15 years. I think we can probably all agree on one thing. I'm a pest. I think we can probably realize how important this issue is for our community. And this ordinance over, update is long overdue. I began volunteering with the animal shelter in 2003. Fostering animals, providing injured animal care, adoptions, education, outreach, organizing, operating the shot clinics. I have seen almost every aspect of animal issues in our community. Cockfighting, dog fighting, dogs intentionally starved, hung from trees and other horrific animal abuse and neglect. As a journalist, I have also covered equally horrific incidents where residents are attacked, bitten, badly mauled or even mauled to death by unaltered aggressive dogs. Residents with crushed arms, legs, faces and scalps partially ripped off. I think we have a photo here of the Kane Corso dog. Alicia was going to pop that in for me, please. Okay, Alicia?
I'm preparing to share my screen. One moment, please.
Sorry, I don't know how to do that.
It's okay. I got it.
Okay. Uh-oh, can we see that?
Yes.
Okay. Um, hopefully that's a large enough picture to give everybody a perspective on what Okay. Um, hopefully that's a large enough picture to give everybody a perspective on what an 80-pound or 90-pound cane corso fighting dog looks like. This dog attacked a woman two blocks from City Hall on Sunset Avenue in 2018, in the church parking lot. She put her hand up to protect her face and the dog crushed both arms or both bones in her forearm. She would have been pulled to the ground and mauled severely had she not been able to get back in her car. This dog was an impulse purchase and had bitten someone else before it was rehomed and bit another person that same, that same afternoon. So this is a representation of casual pet ownership. The dog was unaltered and way, way under-maintained. Statistically, children and seniors are the most frequent victims of bite attacks. Quite a few residents say they are now afraid to walk on our river trail because of loose aggressive dogs. The conclusion I have come to over the years is that a community that tolerates casual or irresponsible pet ownership experiences, experiences these many costly problems. Unaltered dogs with their powerful reproductive hormones are responsible for 85 to 95% of the serious attacks and bites. Casual pet ownership is costly, but it's to the city in remediation costs, enforcement costs, medical costs. Implementing dog licensing, pet limiting with mandatory spay and neutering will reduce animal populations reduced by roaming traffic accidents. Serious enforcement of barking and other animal aggression issues improves quality of life for the entire community. Dog licensing fees pay directly into the animal control department funding. There are even licensing applications where a resident can license and pay for their dog license on a phone. So we've come a long way with administration costs. Funding for proactive animal control efforts should not be an afterthought or last on the budget list. Madera has funded only two animal control officer positions for the last 20 years. Costs to now update this ordinance should be minimal by using the well-drafted and legally-tested ordinance already in successful use and closers with minor adaptations from Fresno ordinances. Ignoring this increasing animal population is costly. In 2016, according to the Madera County Grand Jury Report, approximately 7,400 unwanted or stray animals were impounded at the Madera County Animal Shelter. Excuse me. Adding to the urgency of our problem, our Madera County Animal Shelter appears to have completely changed their method of operation. They were now reportedly declined to accept most stray or unwanted animals from residents. Intaking only about 2,500 animals a year, making residents responsible for most unwanted animals they find. The outcomes for those roughly 5,000 or more unwanted or deflected animals are unknown. I do know that as our human population grows by leaps and bounds, so does our animal population. By taking this step tonight, we can move Madera from casual pet ownership to responsible pet ownership. Changing longstanding attitudes about pet, pet ownership is a slow and massive undertaking. Updating and strengthening our animal ordinances now will finally begin that process. Thank you very much. And I would be happy to answer or research any questions you might have on this subject. I've also got uh, the animal statistics from Animal Control for display for 2018, 2019, and 2020 for those that are interested.
Thank you very much for that, DJ. Is there any other public comments? There we go. So Arnaldo, um, at this point, this is a workshop. Are you asking for any action at this time or suggestions or what are we looking at?
Mayor, I'm not asking, um, if the council would, would want to provide direction, we, we would be happy to take direction on any of the items. Um, however, no formal action is being requested this evening. And s- specific uh, directions, if there's, if council would have any concern, if we begin the process of exploring a pet limiting ordinance, which would articulate how many pets people can have, uh, spay and neuter program, I think would be advisable. And I think the third item is probably a bit more straightforward in terms of, 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 um, just, just animal care standards. Um, adding, adding additional regulation, um, so we, um, so if our code enforcement goes um, out to visit a site, if Animal Control goes out to visit a site, or the police department, or any city employee, we would have a few more tools in our tool belt to enforce, to, to try to get people to be responsible. And again, and that's the goal.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for that. Uh, Councilmember Montes?
Yeah, I would just like to add um, some of the feedback I've gotten from the community. It pretty much echoes what um, Mr. Becker was saying that um, a lot of the complaints come from, from nuisance, uh, the nuisances that come from irresponsible ownership, be it uh, too many dogs, uh, noise complaints. So I would, um, if we, if we are gonna explore that, I would ask uh, Mr. Rodriguez if we can look into maybe like a tiered system for lot size, for animal uh, limitations, um, to explore that. I know some of the other, other, our surrounding communities have that same type of tiered system. So a larger property would, you would be able to have more animals. Um, so it's not just a hard number for, you know, if you have a, a really small property versus a large property. Um, and then I would agree with uh, Councilmember Rodriguez's um, comments that uh, we do everything we can in education. Uh, make that, try to make that a component of it, um, and try to understand some, some of the disadvantaged communities. Um, because this is gonna hit certain parts of the community a little bit harder than others. Um, the other uh, feedback that I, I did receive, um, was regarding livestock animals. I know there are some uh, community members that do uh, have backyard chickens, um, which I think it's becoming, um, I don't know, uh, cool again, or maybe i- it isn't. But you know, we explore that because currently our uh, ordinance does say you can have four livestock animals. Um, and if you go through certain parts of the commu- three? Is that three? Uh, I just lied, I'm sorry. Three, my bad. Um, so, but if we can, we, we can explore that and look into that as well. Because there are members of the community that have reached out to me that said that they would like to keep that uh, component in there. So if we can look into those, and those are my comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Rodriguez, Councilmember? Jose?
Uh, yes, thank you, uh, Mayor Garcia. Um, I, I too would like to see uh, some, some draft come before us, but again, I, I'd like to see um, uh, you know, some, some funding figures and, and funding streams to be able to uh, uh, help uh, pay for the service. I think the service is no different than any other service that we provide the city. So obviously that requires uh, funding. Um, I know Ms. Becker did touch on, on some administrative uh, costs and how that can be uh, collected through, through the spay. Uh, I'd like to see if uh, maybe staff would be able to prepare something um, and give us some type of performa or something, analysis to show what, what realistic fees we're looking at and, and how that would pan out uh, if we do uh, add this spay and neuter. I think uh, uh, certainly uh, that could offset a big chunk of the cost. But nevertheless, there's personnel that's involved. And um, obviously, we're gonna need a, a, a continuous stream of funding to be able to put this service in play, make sure that it's successful and we don't just have another ordinance sitting on the shelf uh, and, and no teeth on it like we said earlier, but rather something that uh, that's enforceable. Uh, but again, to the point that I made earlier, this will have a certain impact on certain folks of our community, so uh, I, I'll ask that uh, we, we, we're sensitive and we provide incentives to be able to bring folks to bring their uh, uh, their pets and, and be responsible pet owners so that we don't have the, the uh, this array that we see today in our community. But certainly, I, I'd like to see some type of analysis with, with regards to funding.
Thank you very much for that, uh, Councilwoman Gallegos.
I just wanted to show my support for staff to uh, drop an ordinance for the animal control and that I'm for it. Thank you.
I don't see any public comment. Alicia, do you have any public comment on this issue?
No, Mayor, none received.
Um, I could, I would personally echo the sentiments of the, of other city council members and uh, DJ uh, regarding this issue. I think we, it's long overdue that we put some um, um, practices in place that provide for safety and for humane um, care for our pets. And so I would definitely uh, support Mr. Rodriguez and his staff to move forward on this issue um, and, and draft something that we could, we could approve. Um, are there any other comments from my council members? Seeing none, any other public comment at all? Then we'll move on if necessary. DJ, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, we've been kicking this around for a couple of years now. If we could just get the consensus to move forward with the process, there's lots of details to work out. Um, but if we could just get it started, um, I'm confident that we can address all the concerns and issues and uh, move for that responsible pet ownership.
And I believe that we do have consensus uh, for that measure. I think everyone that I've been listening to so far has agreed that we will do this. Um, so I, I believe that Arnaldo, you have direction to start moving forward with this.
Yeah, correct, Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Rodriguez, did you have another comment?
Yes, I just wanted to confirm and clarify that the direction or the consensus that's given here today is that we move forward on developing a draft ordinance. Um, I, I know that this is probably not gonna be something that you would bring back, but rather bring us some information based on the direction. Are we, are we asking him to bring an ordinance on our next meeting? I, I wasn't quite clear, so I wanted to make sure. Uh, as DJ said, this is a uh, an ordinance that's gonna have a lot of moving parts and, and I'd like to see how that, how that's developed through the process. So I'm not sure if you're bringing this back as another workshop or you're gonna bring this back as a, as an initial draft? Or what exactly are we directing? I just wanted to confirm what the consensus was.
I see.
I don't see any hands raised. Anybody wants to speak on this issue? Velvet Rose?
Yes, yes. Hi, thank you for having me tonight. Um, I just wanted to add one comment and that is um, City Councilman Rodriguez, I'd like to um, go off his, his comment that we would like as Friends of the Madera Animal Shelter to be part of this conversation, working with the city, working with the county, because I think um, you know, a big part of this is spay and neuter and it is very expensive. We spend about $200,000 to $250,000 a year on spay and neuter and our programs. And so if we can all work together, and especially with the demographics of Madera and Madera County, uh, we really need a low-cost spay and neuter clinic. And maybe through the talks and through workshops, we can all work together on this.
So thank you very much for that, Velvet. Um, correctly, if I'm on, Mr. Rodriguez, I believe that we are asking you to bring back a draft ordinance so that we could start um, you know, making the process. Is that, is that what you're looking at?
I'm not just sure if that question was, or that statement was directed at Councilmember Rodriguez or myself.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's for you, Arnaldo.
And so I believe, and if you cannot hear me clearly, um, my, I had to change my microphones. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, I believe that the direction that I'm receiving this evening is to prepare a draft ordinance. I will work with different community stakeholder groups and then we will bring it back to the council. Um, maybe not for formal action, but at least for first blush action, you know, can direction? Just to make sure that we're not missing anything.
Right.
I, my recommendation is we cannot do this by the next meeting. These ordinances are, are, are complex and they, there's a lot of, um, there's a lot of coordination amongst a lot of people. Some are on this call, some are not on this call, that I simply want to be sure that we're respectful of everyone's time and that our emergency doesn't become their emergency. And so my only ask would be that, that we just temper our expectations with the timing. Um, as long as council acknowledges and the direction is to move forward, I can assure you, we will move as expeditiously as possible.
All right. Well, thank you very much for that. And of course, we'll have to have Hilda included in this conversation for sure.
Absolutely.
If there is no other comments, uh, I think you have direction. Let's move on to the consent calendar. Matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, a member of the public or a member of the council may request an item be removed from the consent calendar and it will be considered separately. Um, do any of my colleagues have any comments or questions regarding the consent calendar? I see none. Uh, Alicia, do we have any members of the public waiting to, wishing to speak on a consela- consent calendar item?
No, Mayor.
I will now ask for a motion for my colleagues on the consent calendar.
I submit your consent calendar as presented. I said.
One more time for the second.
A second.
Need a. Um, a motion's been made by uh, Councilwoman Gallegos and seconded by uh, Councilwoman Evans to approve the consent calendar. Uh, Lisa, can you take the role?
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District six? District six? I think that's a yes from Councilmember Gallegos. Thank you. And Mayor Garcia?
Yes, thank you very much.
Motion passes. Six yes votes, zero no votes. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Um, we do not have any public hearings. We will now move on to item D, petitions, bids, resolutions, ordinances, and agreements. Under item D1, um, agreements with Alliant Insurance Services Incorporated to serve as the City of Madera's consultant and broker of record for employee health and welfare benefits at a cost of $45,000 per year. Um, I believe this item will be presented by Wendy Sola.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And just to confirm, you can see the slideshow?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So there are two agreements related to this service and I'll give uh, some brief information for the council. As background, the city retains a broker of record for employee health and welfare benefits. Our current broker of record agreement is due for renewal. We did publish a request for proposals and received six responses. Those responses included bids to provide the requested services in a range from as low as $45,000 to as high as $99,500 per year. So what is the role of the broker and, you know, what are the services they are providing? This is not the health insurance plans themselves. That is a, a separate action of the council. The broker will solicit proposals from benefit providers um, for plans. This could be health, dental, vision, life, long-term disability, supplemental plans uh, such as section 125 flexible spending accounts, voluntary life, accident insurance, things like that. The broker then assists the city to evaluate um, the proposed benefits, the plan design. Plan design is things like co-pays, deductibles, you know, what it looks like when you actually use the plan um, and the proposed rates and costs, and then negotiate those with the companies. Any decisions related to the actual benefit plans um, offered by the city are made by the city council. The broker provides us the information to make informed decisions. So we did put out the RFP as noted. We had a committee of bargaining unit representatives and city staff review the proposals. They uh, came up with a top three. Um, the group agreed on the top three and we invited those to make presentation via Zoom to the committee on the services they were proposing. The committee unanimously ranked the presentations um, as shown in this table. So Alliant Insurance Services was the top-ranked firm. That was actually based on services. Price was the last thing we discussed as a committee. Um, the bonus here is that they were the lowest-priced proposal, um, but they, they- Um, the bonus here is that they were the lowest price proposal, um, but they, they had a very, uh, good package and impressed, uh, the employees that were on the committee. So the cost of our existing broker services were last adjusted in two thousand sixteen. I say that because it's, it's been held at the same cost for four and a half years, which has been great. So there is an increase now that we're going out for, um, a new bid. So the proposed cost at forty-five thousand per year is an annual increase of fifteen thousand six hundred. Um, as noted in the staff report, the cost of broker services is considered part of the health insurance premiums. We do it as a flat fee to, as a cost containment issue as opposed to a percentage-based commission to the broker. Um, we are recommending that we not adjust, uh, the premium amount that we charge employees or we negotiate the city's contribution for with bargaining units, um, mid-year. We, uh, would just propose that this be covered at this point for the remainder of the fiscal year from the contracted services in the insurance reserve fund. There are sufficient monies there in the adopted budget, um, to cover the sixty-five hundred dollar increase for this year. The proposed contract is for a three-year term and can be extended for two additional years by mutual consent. So the recommended action is to adopt the resolution, which would approve the consulting services agreement with Alliant. And it would also approve the business associate agreement, which is, um, part of the, the health insurance, um, confidentiality, uh, requirement. It's something called HIPAA High Tech. That was, uh, in the staff report in a little more detail. So I will stop sharing my screen and I'm available to answer any questions.
Do we have any members of the council wishing to ask a question of Wendy regarding this presentation? Hearing none, seeing none. Alicia, do we have any public comments on this presentation? Alicia? I don't see any raised hands. Okay, then now we'll bring it back to council for a motion.
Do we remove to approve item D one as presented?
Second.
Motion's been made and called for the, um, item D one to, uh, approve, um, item D one by, um, Councilmember Montes, seconded by, um, Councilwoman Gallegos. Alicia, would you please call the role for the vote?
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes with six yes votes and zero no votes.
Thank you very much, Alicia. We will now move on to item E, administrative reports. Item E one is a report by the Madera County Economic Development Commission, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two annual basic service level budget. This will be, uh, presented by Mr. Bobby Khan. Bobby, you have the floor. You can unmute yourself, please.
I, I apologize. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Bobby Khan, uh, Executive Director, Madera County Economic Development Commission. Um, and I appreciate your time tonight and what I'm going to do is just go into a brief presentation, uh, and then take questions. So I'm going to share my screen. And hopefully you're seeing my screen now.
Yes, for sure, Bobby.
Okay, thank you. So just the highlights of the presentation tonight, it will be brief. Um, just want to cover some of our marketing, uh, uh, tools, our lead generation and tracking, uh, the grant program, uh, different organizations we're affiliated with, projects, and then of course, uh, the budget. Um, so our marketing, we continue, uh, even during the pandemic. We've kind of pivoted, uh, with what we're doing and have adopted, uh, meetings over Zoom. Um, they have been relatively successful. Um, at the beginning, everybody was saying how great it was to be able to meet over Zoom because we didn't have to travel or go anywhere. But, uh, now as we've been in this for about ten months, people are saying we can hardly wait to get back to, uh, face-to-face meetings. But we have held over the last several months, uh, we've, we've targeted site selectors, um, through the Site Selection Guild and we've had, uh, five one-hour meetings each month, uh, September through January. Our eBiz newsletter continues to go out every month and hopefully all of you are receiving that. If, uh, none of, if, if, excuse me, if any of the, uh, council members, I especially want to address the new council members, are not receiving this monthly newsletter, please contact us and we will add you to the list. Our annual report, which the cover is on the left-hand side of this slide, um, was released earlier, uh, this year. Um, the, it's available online. We sent it out through an e, uh, email, e-blast, and then we also mailed this year, uh, approximately, uh, six hundred and fifty copies. Uh, one of the reasons why we wanted to mail this, this year was, excuse me, um, it, it was, uh, an opportunity for us to upgrade our, uh, mailing list to make sure that it, it remains accurate because we have many brokers and site selectors, especially brokers that, that move, uh, from office to office. I was also able to attend the ICSC, which is International Council of Shopping Centers by invitation only. They had a virtual run, retail runway for Northern California. So I was invited to attend that and, uh, was very informative and was able to take note of, uh, retailers that are looking to, uh, grow and expand. Uh, lead generation and tracking. One of the things we do on behalf of the city is we, we complete and return all requests for repo, proposals. These are referred to as RFIs. Um, we receive them from the California, uh, Central California EDC. We receive those from GO Biz, which is the Governor's Office of Economic Development. We receive those from our website through broker requests and site selection companies. We also have a program called ACT that as we submit proposals and, and get inquiries and, and leads, that we enter those leads into a, a program, uh, that allows us to follow up on, on a regular basis so that we're remaining in constant contact with, with these companies so that we don't just send them some information and then they don't hear from us again. So we try to follow up with them and stay, uh, uh, informed of what they're, where they are in the process and we note that and, and we keep a, a running list of all the notes, uh, on that and where that lead, where that lead is in the progress of that lead. As you're all aware, um, through the pandemic, it has been very hard on a lot of our local businesses. Um, we were the, uh, managing, uh, partner of the, uh, County of Madera and the Economic Development Small Business Pandemic Grant Assistance Program. Um, the EDC assisted a hundred and thirteen businesses in the city of Madera. Those, that's just the city. Um, we were able to, uh, push out, uh, a little over a million dollars in grants. Uh, again, that's awarded to just businesses in the city of Madera. Uh, we're working closely now with the city's staff on rolling out the city's, um, grant, uh, uh, program for small businesses, working out some of the, uh, details. Uh, we're doing, we've gone through draft, um, applications and making a few minor changes there. Uh, so we're hoping to put that out to the, uh, community, the business community, uh, in, in just a week or, or so. The state of California, we are open right now for the second round of the State of California Grant Fund. Um, that fund started in, or excuse me, opened February second, which was yesterday, and will close on February eighth. So it's a short window period. Um, so we're encouraging all businesses to get their grant application in. We're pushing that out through all our social media platforms. We've contacted all the chambers of commerce and trying to get them to push the word out. We're also working as a, um, as, as a, uh, assistance site so that businesses can call us and we will help them walk through the, uh, the, the grant, the grant application if they need assistance. I was just on the phone this afternoon with a small business in the city of Madera, uh, helping a, a lady walk through the program as she was having difficulty with it. Uh, we also have a, a contact, a direct contact with Lendistry, who's running, who's the third-party administrator for the state of California. Uh, her name is Tina Pelzer. She's been great. Um, and she, uh, is, has the patience of a saint and, and, uh, just holds the hand of these businesses to make sure that they get their applications, uh, in, 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 in a timely manner. Um, just some of the organizations, we'll run through this just real quick. Uh, we remain, you know, in constant contact with the Governor's Office of Economic, uh, Development. Um, we just had a hour-long, uh, conversation with them, uh, last Friday. Um, we're also still the administrators of the Greater Madera County Industrial Association, uh, on the Community Advisory Board for Channel Thirty, uh, Cal Ed. I sit on their Legislative Action Committee where we track, uh, and, um, we track bills that are uh, related to economic development and small business and also have regular, uh, communication with, uh, with, uh, Assembly and Senate members at the state level. Uh, we're the representative for you at the California Central Valley Economic Development Corporation, which is the regional group of the eight counties of, of the central, um, Central Valley. And we also sit on the High-Speed Rail Committee. Um, these are just some of the projects. Um, what I would like to just say is that some of these you probably have heard about. Um, and, uh, but we also have a lot of, uh, projects that unfortunately I'm very limited on what I can say because, um, we've had some very, very major projects that have been, um, that are taking very hard looks that we're getting deeper into. But as we get to that level of deeper involvement, they've required us to sign non-disclosure agreements. So I'm very limited on what I can talk about because of those non-disclosure agreements. But just, uh, some of the things, uh, one of the ones I just want to touch on, I'm not going to touch on all these, but Miles Chemical, for example, um, that, you know, we've talked to you about, they, they were able to get their, um, conditional use permit, uh, uh, last year. But I've been in conversations with them now and on their site, they're already looking to, uh, add fifty-four thousand square feet to, to that site. Um, the casino, I think you're all aware of that. The former Zellman property was recently purchased, um, by Span Construction and Engineering. Uh, so we're looking to, um, see an aggressive, uh, uh, campaign on that. And then just recently I've worked with the brokers on the east half of the Guzman property, which is the Love's property. The Guzman property was forty-one acres. Love's purchased about half of that. And so the second half of eighteen acres, uh, which is left after Sharon Boulevard was developed, um, is now on the market and is represented by Colliers International, which is good news because they will be very aggressive in marketing that property. So, uh, you can look for new development to happen out there. Uh, and as I said, there's heavy interest on other available sites out in that seventeen corridor, um, that I'm restricted to talk about. And we did, um, play a, an integral role of leasing the, uh, six oh five South Gateway Drive. I basically gave the broker, the, the tenant, and they signed the lease there. Retail market overview, we still have interest. We have one major, um, retail, um, uh, uh, person or company, um, of, like I said, a major, uh, market, uh, influence um, that is looking in Madera. Um, but again, they have us under a non-disclosure agreement as well. We have some smaller ones as, uh, as well that are looking around. Um, but there's, uh, the, the retail market has been hot and cold. Um, they're kind of getting back on their feet again through the pandemic. But I think you'll see some, some more activity through the next year. And going on to, uh, what the minute order is about tonight is the twenty-one, twenty-two annual budget. And just to kind of highlight some of the, the budget, uh, is the population percentage for the city of Madera has gone down, uh, very, very slightly. We review this every year and what the percentage, the population percentages are and readjust them on, on an annual basis. And, uh, we partner with the Madera County Transportation Commission to make sure our, our numbers are consistent with theirs. The new percentage dropped from forty-one point three-six to forty-one, uh, excuse me, from forty-one six-three to forty-one three-six. And this doesn't necessarily mean your population has gone down. It just means your percentage of the overall population of Madera County is gone down. Um, the dollar increase, uh, from twenty-twenty-one versus twenty-one, twenty-two is just over a thousand dollars. And this slide will show you the actual budget breakdown, um, of how that money is, is, uh, contained in the budget. And it shows your percentage, it shows the overall budget, and it shows the county's percentage and the city of Chilis' percentage. And with that, I will, uh, stop, uh, sharing my screen and, um, answer any questions, so.
Are there any questions from my colleagues, Mr. Montes?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so Bobby, I know you can't talk about, uh, specific projects or like who the, the project is or what the project is. But can you go through for the benefit of the public and the council, um, kind of walk us through how a project is, uh, is completed from start to finish or, um, can you just give us some more information on that? Not necessarily who or what, but kind of the process.
Sure, not a problem. Um, the, the process starts with just a general inquiry. Um, and again, they come from, back on the slides, they come from various sources, either from Central California EDC, it can come from our website, it can come from a broker, site selector, it can from, come from the state of California. But we're contacted, uh, by one of those, uh, entities and asked to submit information for, to them for particular sites, uh, as they describe what their need is. From there, uh, we follow up with them. Some projects are more aggressive than others. Um, but as the progress, as the pro, project moves forward, then, uh, at, at, at a particular point, then we will include the city of Madera staff, um, in, into the mix to start, uh, having evaluations and initial discussions on the development of the site. What's going to be required, what type of environmental, uh, documents that may be required, timelines. These are always important, especially on the bigger projects. Um, they're looking to see how fast they can move. They're looking for jurisdictions that can move rapidly through the permitting process so that they get from, from permits to breaking ground quickly. Um, so we, we stay with them all through that permitting process and then once they do break ground, we stay with them for that. Uh, if there's any, uh, issues that may arise and we, uh, contact the appropriate city staff, um, to make sure that we can solve those issues to keep the project on, on track and make sure the client is pleased with, uh, their experience in, in the city of Madera. Um, and that's kind of the, the process. Once the, the, once the project is completed, uh, we don't go away after that. And that's one of the things that we tell, uh, our project, uh, proponents is that, you know, we will help you with site selection, we will help you with permitting, we'll help you through the development of, of the project. But once you're open and running, we're still going to be there because they'll still have some issues, whether it be with the state, whether it be with the city, whether it be, uh, you know, with, uh, air quality control, no matter who it is. Um, we will be there to help them solve their problem. I hope that is kind of what you're looking for.
Yeah, um, also, do you ever connect them with other sort, uh, resources like workforce development? Say, hey, you know, I know you're in, in, in Madera, but we want you to hire Moderns as well.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I, I apologize. One of the things that we do do during the process, uh, uh, I kind of went from the, on, more on the city's side of it. But one of the other things we do is, is work with them on, on incentives, uh, incentive programs that are hiring programs, um, possible incentives that they may want to ask of the city. Um, we, I don't want to say we help them negotiate those, but We, I don't want to say we help them negotiate those, but we help them with that process. But yeah, we partner very closely with workforce development and our other stakeholders to help us through this process to make sure we too, one of the important things of bringing projects to Madera is to make sure we put Maderans to work at these projects. That's, that's one of the main goals of the Economic Development Commission is to increase the vitality of our economy by putting Maderans to work.
Thank you. Bobby, could you go back to a couple of slides back? If you could go back to the screen showing the amount of money that were doled out to the businesses?
Sure. That slide is the one you're?
Yes.
Okay.
So this is federal government and state?
No, this is federal cares money that was awarded to the county of Madera.
Okay. And how much total money was awarded to the county of Madera?
To the entire amount, the total amount that they received, I believe, was right around 3.8 million. The amount that they put forth to this project, I believe, was about 3.5 or 6 million. And we pushed out a little over 3 million countywide in grants.
You made a reference to the city grant.
Yes.
When, when did, we pushed that, those monies out a while back. Do you recall the date that we set that out for the city grant? The monies that we were putting out there?
Yeah, we haven't launched it yet. So when we say pushed it out, the city, I want to say it was, I can't remember when you guys did that council meeting, but I was there and...
Arnaldo, do you, do you remember that date that we awarded the money to be sent out as part of the city grant to businesses in our community?
Yeah, so we have a couple of different grants that we're working on. So the grant that, and that Bobby's discussing right here on the slide, is specific to the cares funding that went to the county. The city, the city funding that went out was part of the community block development grant. And that funding, I believe, we just recently, are we still waiting on hype to get back to us, Yvette? Or have we released those funds? Can you please remind us?
No, these were in the summer and they were released as part of the CDBG COVID. Those we received approval for, so we could launch those. And my understanding is that EDC has had a steady flow of assistance to small businesses. And there, I don't know what timelines you had for the counties, but we're the ones that are, they're going to work on after the counties.
Okay. So there's a couple of sets of grants, Mayor. There's, and there's different buckets of money. And it sounds like the cares funding for the community block development grant, that's, that's the next wave to come out, correct, Bobby? And that's the next way that you'll be providing?
Yes, the next, the next local grant will be the city of Madera's grant funds. And like I said, Lois and David Dibis have been in communication on, really on a daily basis, putting together draft applications. I've looked through it, made a few changes. And then they're also coordinating because the Chamber of Commerce is going to be rolling out their money as well. So we wanted to make sure that the Chamber and the EDC were consistent in what we were doing with that, so we weren't in conflict with one another. So in the conversations that I had with Lois today, I think we're just about ready to roll this out. I would think it might start, I don't know, I don't want to say, I don't want to put a hard date on it, but I think it could start as early as next week and if not, the week after.
What I'm concerned with is if the businesses that are closing as we speak or are being impacted by the pandemic, this money's available and we need to act accordingly to get this money out there to those businesses. That's what it's, that's exactly what it's for. So I would just, just say, please make sure that we act quickly to get that money out there to these businesses so we don't continue to have businesses in Madera, whether it's the county or the city, closed because they have been affected by the pandemic. So, you know, act with post haste to make sure that that gets rolled out. And if you need some assistance from us, then I'd be happy to help. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Garcia. Bobby, can you take us to the slide, the final slide with the amounts that each agency is? Okay, so. So I'm sorry, maybe forgive me, but I don't know that we received anything other than the presentation with the amounts that being requested from the city. Did you highlight on that?
I don't know if everybody's experienced it, but Councilmember Rodriguez is shorting out on my end.
Okay, I'll ask that question again. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so I didn't, we didn't receive, I don't know that we received any other information with respects to the numbers and all, and I believe that there's an amount that's being requested for the city. So can you highlight on the amount and again, how we come up with that, those figures?
Yes. On this slide, you'll see in column two where it says city?
Correct.
Okay, and you will go down, if you, there's a blue arrow right there. And then you will go down to the very bottom. You will see the amount requested, which is in a blue circle. And then to the right, the far right at the very bottom is the total budget for the EDC that is funded through the three jurisdictions. Not sure if that answers your question?
Somewhat, yes. You know, I know in the past, we brought this before previous councils in regards to how the funding. So let me ask you a question here, and only because, you know, through Fresno's EDC, I know that their member cities, that they contribute anywhere between $6,000 to $8,000. You know, their bigger cities like Clovis probably contribute 50 and the city of Fresno closer to 100. Now, their biggest source of revenue comes from their private sector and the raising of funds through that, through that arena. So question for you is, is that something that we can see the EDC evolve to? Something within that arena? I mean, having to get more private sector influence or possibly contribution to the, to the EDC?
It is a possibility. Now, the, what you have to remember is, you know, well before my time, this, the Economic Development Commission was, was created through a joint powers agreement with the two, excuse me, the three jurisdictions. With that said, I mean, it was not like we don't, we can't change, but this was the way that it was felt was the best way to keep it funded. Now with the Fresno, as you said, the Fresno County EDC, they do have, they are a nonprofit corporation. They are not a commission. So they do receive funding through both private and, and public funding. And then also the county of Fresno has, I believe, 13 incorporated cities. So when you spread it amongst them, yeah, they can contribute less. The other thing that they have is it would be difficult and almost, well, it would be difficult, let me just leave it at that, for us to raise anywhere close to the amount of private funding that they have because of the industrial base and the economic or the, or the large, the large business community they have as far as contributing companies that are willing to invest in the EDC that we really would have limited resources in the private sector to get anywhere near or even a small percentage, or I shouldn't say small, or even a percentage of what they raise. Then also they have a full, well, they have a staff person that dedicates most of their time for just fundraising, which we don't have. So that's something else that you have to take into consideration, whether or not we could raise enough funds to make it worthwhile. You know, is, is a question that we would have to evaluate closely.
Well, I know that this model has been, you know, it's been challenged in the past in regards to how this, this got started. I know that this could be something that was done in the olden days or, but I mean, I think it certainly would merit a, a, a new look at the way, you know, we're doing business through the EDC. And what I mean by that, Bobby, is that possibly start incorporating some private sector monies so that, you know, we get a lesser of the share there. I always feel that the city of Madera, of course, being a bigger, I mean, there's only three of us there, but 41% of that is quite huge there. And, you know, I don't know how the EDC committee is formulated, but the other component that I noticed from Fresno is that they have a lot more members that are, that are, that are part of their committee. And it's, it's more so geared, a lot of private sector folks that are, that are part of that board, kind of directing, requesting and having some type of five-year plan, you know, directing staff to bring something back. I don't know how much influence in the city we have, but certainly, you know, for 180,000 that we're putting in, we want to make sure that every penny is worthwhile and we're getting our money's worth for the contribution that we make. Now, the other question that I will ask is in regards to staff, and I ask this because, you know, there is monies coming directly from the city. What, what kind of plan, do you have a five-year plan, some type of succession plan or anything else? I understand that the EDC lost a very important staff member there and I'm wanting to know how that's going to affect your, your, your business now? And what are, what are you doing to mitigate for that?
Okay, the, and some of it I might have to ask you to repeat, but I'm going to take the last part first. But as far as succession plan, you know, we, I, we, we don't have a huge succession plan, like who's going to take my place because we have a very limited staff. So to try to, we certainly, like with Julie, I always encouraged her to, to, you know, to strive to, you know, to sit in the chair that I sit in someday, although she really didn't have a desire to do that. But in addressing that other question that you have, Julie did leave and I was in full support of her. She took a job with the state of California and the Governor's Office of Economic Development, representing the San Joaquin Valley. We did make a recent hire of a person that I think is going to be very, very capable and actually bring a lot of skillsets to the office that maybe we haven't had in the past. Not saying that Julie wasn't great, but as younger people go through college today, they're learning so much different technology in their, their business and marketing classes that is going to really push this person forward. Where we were training, certainly training Julie every step of the way and that was helping her advance and she did a fabulous job. As she was here, our new hire is going to be able to step right in on the technology side and be as equipped, if not more equipped, to handle that. And we will be able to onboard her with a little bit of the economic development skills, I think that will come on, come into play very quickly. I'm very pleased with the person that's coming on and I think you'll very much enjoy meeting her. She will be, she'll be starting, I'm sorry, she'll be starting the 16th of this month.
Thank you for addressing that, Bobby. And I'll leave with this here. I do feel that for the amount of money that we do contribute, I feel that the city should be providing some type of measure of accountability as far as what we, what we want and the direction that the city would want to go when it comes to the EDC and how we can be a bigger players in this organization. I know that it's just a, you know, this happens annually where, you know, we give a presentation and here's our, here's our contribution to the, to the EDC. But in return, you know, what, what is a city, and this is more so for staff, is what is a city, what kind of measures of accountability is a city demanding from the EDC? What do we want to see? I mean, I understand that there's businesses that are coming in, some through your organization, some through, obviously looking for other opportunities in the city of Madera. But, you know, these are reports that I'd like for the city council to, to certainly look at as far as, you know, what, what measures of accountability? What do we want from the EDC? And I don't think there's a clear picture that our staff has really presented to EDC, but I would encourage staff to start really pinpointing on what we're looking for so that those dollars can be utilized in a very effective way.
I'm, I'm happy to work closely with your staff and your city manager. That's not an issue. Mr. Rodriguez, Arnaldo and I get along very well, communicate regularly. He's very open to taking meetings and has been involved with several meetings with clients. So we're, we're always happy to be as transparent and nimble as possible. And you do have your representative that sits on the, the Economic Development Commission Board and that person also sits on the five-person executive committee.
Do you have any other comments, Mr. Rodriguez?
Those are my comments, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Gairos?
Thank you, Mayor. Bobby, I just had a couple of questions. On the two first items, it says staff salary and other compensations. Only because we're stewards of the taxpayer dollars, if we could get more of information on what other compensations are. I understand that the staff benefits do increase because insurance does go up and goes down. But I'm looking at your overall budgets and in 1516 and 1617, the staff salary compensation stayed the same. On 1718, they went up 7,000 and 1819, they went up, they went up 30,000 additional. This is additional every year. And, and so in the last two years, they've gone up 20,000 that I see. That's, that's a big jump, 20,000 from the last two budgets. And I'm not sure why it's such a big jump with salaries and compensation. And that's why I just would need more information to understand that, unless you can elaborate on that tonight.
Well, I can elaborate a little bit on that tonight. Through the recession, which started basically '08, '09-ish, probably '08, salary staffs were frozen for at least, I believe, four years or so. I froze my salary, I believe, for seven to maybe eight years. And then after that, I felt it was appropriate to, as we came out of the recession, I felt it was appropriate that at some point in time, I did need to give the staff a raise. And then I also, at that time, sat down with my board and we renegotiated my contract, so it had some salary increases. So it had some salary increases. And then where it does say, you know, other compensation, other compensation includes our health benefits, our vision, you know, the, the same benefits basically that you afford your employees.
Yeah, but wouldn't that be under staff benefits, that line item? That's totally separate.
Right.
There's still that twenty thousand dollar increase on staff salary and compensation that has nothing to do with the benefits.
Okay, I, I apologize. I, yeah, so, yeah, so that's basically the explanation. You should have received, I believe, in the, in the packet that we sent to the city, it does have a complete breakdown of, of each individual's salary and benefits that are paid out. So that was in your packet. So I, to, I don't really have, I don't think I can provide any more information than that because that is a very detailed list that breaks down salary, breaks down each, our, you know, like health, vision, disability, life insurance. It, it, every category is, is broken down on that. It is, it, it breaks it down into salary, retirement, employer taxes, workers' comp, medical, dental, vision, life and long-term disability.
Yeah, Bobby, we didn't get that. We just got, we just got what you're showing us right now. That's all we got.
Okay, well, we can make sure.
I didn't think I, I had seen it.
Okay, because the, the, I, I apologize if you didn't get it. I, I have it in the packet that is sitting here in my file, so.
So, so how does your board decide on, is it, it is a, is it a range that you go up? Is it COLA? Is it Ameri-? How does, how does it work with EDC?
Yeah. Yeah, we have salary, salary ranges for Lois's position and we have a salary range for Julie's position. I am in the process, as we speak, at the last executive committee meeting, I brought that to them. And, and so they, the executive committee has asked me to reevaluate the salary ranges and to report back to them. So I am hoping to have that report back to them either this next meeting or no later than the March meeting to put that before them. The, my contract is, is negotiated and, and going back to that. So the, the salary schedules will be the same as what you're used to at the city and what you're used to seeing through the education systems, where you have step increases that are booked in. Once you hit the final level, then you have COLA increases. And of course, those steps are affected by COLA as well. So if there's a COLA increase, then that's added on as, you know, it is with, within your systems would be. We try to mirror our system with your system. And the only difference is, is that, that my contract is negotiated with the executive committee. And so like right now, I'm, I'm in the third year of a three-year contract with them. So that's basically how my salary is set. We negotiated that, I believe it was COLA plus one or something, if I recall my contract.
Okay, I'm just, I guess I need to see it because seeing twenty thousand dollars in two years increase, I, I would have to, I just don't understand where that would be. If it's even a salary range schedule or even a one percent COLA, that, that just seems to be a lot to increase in a budget for, for that line item.
Yes, I.
So if you could get that to the council or to Alicia and she could give it out to us, we'd appreciate it. So we can just take a look at that.
Right. What I will do is, is, is we can send the, the, the schedule that I was talking, not, I don't want to say schedule. We can send the detailed list to you. We can have that to you by tomorrow morning. And we will make sure that we send you the new salary schedules as adopted as soon as my executive committee adopts them. And we'll get those to you. That'll be for the two positions. And then my contract would be, will be negotiated again in, my, my contract expires June thirtieth, so it'll be, start negotiating probably in April.
Perfect, thank you.
You're more than welcome.
Is there any other members of the council wishing to speak on this item? Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
Mayor, I have not received any public comment for this item.
Thank you. Mr. Jose Rodriguez, do you want to add something?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that, you know, I don't know how we, we fit this in our budget, but obviously this comes before us during this time of the year. I'm gonna request if, if I have consensus from the council that our staff really hold some type of measure of accountability, to be able to quantify what we, what we get in return for that amount of money and really start really looking at our budget. Again, these are taxpayers' dollars and we've got to make sure that we're able to, to explain how we best utilize these. There's no doubt in my mind that EDC does its job in trying to acquire businesses for the city of Madera. We just don't know how that's done and, and if you were to quantify that in some type of measurement, then we can certainly feel more comfortable when we're providing a, a resolution to, to, to provide a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars to the EDC. I would feel more comfortable if, if staff can also direct and, and, and have something in, in, in respects to what we want to see within the city. I know that we, we, you're serving three different agencies, but again, a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars, what exactly are we getting for that? And that's what I want to see in some type of report. So I, I'd like for staff to start considering that. If, if again, the council would, 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 uh, would have consensus to do so. Only so that, you know, when this comes back to us, you know, we, we know exactly on the budget item, what we're, what we're paying for, what exactly is a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars? What, what measure of accountability do we have for that? And, and just like no other services that we provide for a city, we want to know exactly where those tax dollars are going and how they're best utilized.
Thank you very much for that, Mr. Rodriguez. I don't see any more hands, so I'm gonna put in my two cents. I consider it a lack of organization for Mr. Khan not to make quarterly reports to, at the very minimum, our city manager. We've been asking for this for two years. We get emails saying, anytime you want to meet with me, we can meet, but we don't really get reports. And I would say that if we are gonna approve this, that we would require Mr. Khan to meet with Mr., our city manager on a quarterly basis to give a full report that he can bring back to the council. Because I have not seen that and we've asked for that in the past. Mr. Montes and I met with you back in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, and we asked for that. And you told us that you were gonna provide quarterly reports, but yet we have not gotten that. Just like we didn't get the information that you're, that Mr. Rodriguez is asking for right now in the packet or Ms. Gallegos. So I would say that lacking a, a better alternative, that we would approve this budget, but that you would meet with Mr. Rodriguez, our city manager, and give him quarterly updates about what exactly your office is doing. I don't think that's too much to ask for. One, once a quarter is not too much to ask.
I, I have no problem with that and, and my, my plan going forward is to, to make sure that we stay consistent is that we will request that the city clerk and the city manager approve a workshop for us every quarter. So we have this meeting in February, so the first meeting of May, first meeting of August, first meeting of November, that we would be allowed to be on your workshop agenda to give you, give you as the full council. And I will be more than happy to meet with the city manager not only quarterly, but more often than that. He and I can talk offline and set a, a schedule. And I'm happy to meet with him monthly if, if that's what he desires or that's what is best. I think I will leave that to his discretion. But I'm happy to meet with him twice a month, once a month, however he wants to set the schedule.
Oh, I would, I would ask Mr. Rodriguez, our city manager, to, you know, I can let him decide exactly what he wants to do. But I don't believe that it's necessary for you to come before this body every quarter. But if, if, if our city manager wishes to you to make a presentation, then I could certainly be open to that. But at the very minimum, if you could meet with him on a quarterly basis and give a report of your, the EDC, I think that would be beneficial, so.
I, I will be happy to do it, however your city manager would like.
Thank you very much.
And the council.
Thank you. Any more comments from anyone before we move it for action? I don't see any public, anything on the public side, Alicia?
No, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I will bring this item up, E1 for action.
So I move to approve E1 and do I need to make, I don't know, I guess it's a question for Mr., for you, Mr. Mayor, any modification to that? Or would that not be something that we would modify this with the mayor's request?
Well, I believe that we could just pass this budget item and then leave it up to the discretion of our city manager, how he wants to work the details of these reports.
Okay, so I've moved to approve item E1 as presented then.
Point of order, Mayor and council. I did hear a lot of different requests and concerns and it, it almost seems like it's a kind of an item where you would refer it back to staff for further review and presentation so that when you do adopt the budget, you have the details before you because the, and it's your, because you're the one that's approving it. And your city manager would present you with a report and say, and say, these are, these are, this is what we're going to get moving forward, these kinds of meetings, these kinds of reports. We're gonna look more into salaries, maybe eliminating positions, adding positions, et cetera. I mean, there's a lot there that I heard from various council members and as far as concerns, and then all of a sudden you're asking for a motion to just approve it and that the council, the city manager can do whatever he wants. And he does really wonderful work, but.
I have faith in our city manager.
General.
So Hilda, does Councilman Montez pull his motion?
He can pull the motion and then it, it seems to me, I mean, obviously he has a right to keep it on. Somebody can second it and you can approve it tonight as is. It's just that it's not, the motion doesn't conform with what I hear, heard all of you say.
And Hilda, if I may, I, I concur with you and that's why I had to ask for consensus of the, if, if we can do this. So I, I appreciate that. I'm not sure if a council member, Montes, would rescind his motion and we can take this back to staff and maybe table the item for, for future. Coming back and addressing the concerns that the council had.
Yes, I'll rescind my motion to approve.
Okay. So do we need to, to have a vote for tabling this, Hilda, or we just rescind?
You can just, yeah, you, yes, you can just go, I think it's direction, the, the manager knows that, that he needs to bring something back and it is a budget, so can't wait forever, but whenever he can, he will bring it back.
At the next possible meeting date. Okay, well, thank you very much for that. We will move on.
Mr. Mayor, if, if I can, just, just so that your, your city attorney is aware too that we do, and, and there's, well, there's plenty of time, adequate time left, but within the joint powers agreement, we do have to have, it states within the joint powers agreement, we do have to have the final budget approved no later than March thirty-first.
Thank you.
Yeah, not a problem. All right, so we will move on to item F. Councilmember reports, announcements and future item, agenda items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for the mayor and councilmembers to make brief reports on boards, committees and other public agencies and at public events to request updates, to initiate future agenda items and take action on matters initiated under this section of the agenda. Under this section, the council may take action only on the items specifically agendas and which meet other requirements for action. Councilmember Gallegos?
Okay, I'll start. I have three things. I just wanted to clarify that. I do respect protocol from our health director. It's that there are other directors and employees getting vaccinated that are not at high priority, like our wastewater treatment plant and our, our water employees. So it's not that I don't respect the protocol. It's I'm just trying to make a case that this is important, that they need to be vaccinated. The second thing is I want everybody to know that I'm a, a paid, I pay, I'm a paid member of my union. I'm very involved with our majority of high school district employees union and I've been also active on the executive board. And the last thing I want to say is KBC just put out a poll for affordable places to live in the valley and Madera was number one. So woo-hoo, praise the rough Madera, great job. And that's what I have to say this evening. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Garcia. All I wanted to, is a suggested agenda item. I know that these workshops with cannabis are coming along. I just wanted to reemphasize that, that cannabis, the cannabis does have an ad hoc and that consists of the mayor and myself. I'd like for, for us to be included in any future meetings that are taking place with HDL. I think I've expressed that before. But I think it's important as we go through this process of workshops and identifying what the best path for ordinance is. So I, I don't know if I need to bring it back in another agenda item, but I, I did let our city manager know, full, full disclosure, that I, I wish that the ad hoc is, continues to, to meet thoroughly with not only the city manager, but also any of these that are involved in making the, the drafting of the ordinance. So again, that's why the council selected this ad hoc committee and I want us to continue to work on that ordinance moving forward.
Right, thank you very much for that. Councilmember Montes?
Oh, oh yeah, thank you all staff for everything you guys are doing. I know, especially with Mr. Foss, you know, that presentation and all the stuff you're doing. I know you guys really care and thank you for taking care of us. And jump on, Councilman Gallegos, also a dues-paying union member, FCEA, in the house right here. So just wanna jump on that little bandwagon right there and everybody have a good day.
Okay, Councilwoman Evans?
First, I want to tell, say to Chief Lawson, thank you so very much for the work that you guys are doing in the river bottom. And I don't know if that's appropriate or not, but I truly appreciate it as a resident of the Meadows and as a councilperson for District Four, receiving phone calls in reference to that. Also, I want to make note that I requested a proclamation for Lucille Murphy as the eldest African-American woman in Madera. And also to let everyone know that on the February the twenty-first, there will be a Black History Month celebration. And I know there's a Brown Act, so anyone that can come, please come. It's going to be quite an event, so those are my items.
Thank you very much, councilmember. Councilmember Viegas?
No comments.
Okay, short, sweet. Okay. Okay, thank you very much for attending tonight. Thank you very much, all of you, for your help and assistance in getting us through, through this city council meeting. So just want to ask everyone to, to be safe, be safe out there. Thank you to our first responders. I'm hoping that all of our first responders get their vaccinations in a timely fashion so that they can continue serving the, the community as they have been doing. I want to now move on to our closed session. Hilda, could you please lead us on to that?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, there are two items on tonight's agenda. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, there are two items on tonight's agenda. One of the items that we, the city manager and I are pulling, as we do not have, we did not receive new information, and that's G one concerning the High Speed Rail Authority item. So the only item for tonight will be G two conference with labor negotiators under government code section five four nine five seven point agency designated representatives are Mayor Garcia and Councilmember Gallegos, and the unrepresented employee is the city manager. And Mayor and Council, since this is negotiations on the city manager, you can let me know if you want me present, otherwise I will get off the call and you can call me if you have any questions, and I can get back on the call.
Thank you very much for that, Hilda. Then I will adjourn this meeting. Our next regular meeting is on February seventeenth of this year. We will now move into closed session. Thank you very much, and good evening to everyone. Adios.
Affordable action I take? I just want to confirm. Okay, okay, sounds good. Joe, whenever you're ready. Good evening. This is to report out a closed session on item G two conference with labor negotiated. Pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven point six, agency designated representatives, Mayor Santos Garcia and Councilwoman C.C. Gallegos, and represented employee city manager, no reportable action. That concludes tonight's meeting. I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Thank you very much for that. Good night, Joseph. Good night, councilmembers. Mr. Rodriguez, have a have a good evening. Take care of yourselves. Don't get sick.
Good night, good night.